Carl Lupiano, Ferndale. Honorable Council members, Happy New Year. This is the first in a series of testimonials telling you how to run the county. In the coming months, you will be deliberating on actions that could have a profound impact on citizens and/or taxpayers of Watcom County. Actions that will make commitments on our behalf in perpetuity, as well as actions that will introduce new and wide-ranging limits on traditional land use. The justification for these actions has to be based on verifiable truth and not on conjecture, on valid science, and not on special interests pushing unproven theories or their preferred lifestyle on the rest of us. I want to focus on the science for a moment. We keep hearing the buzz phrase “best available science,” but far too often, the worst imaginable conjecture has been the basis for environmental public policy. You can expect problems with that. Just this month, in Virginia, U.S. District Judge Liam O'Grady ruled that stormwater runoff is not a pollutant, so EPA is not authorized to regulate it. This landmark decision could have wide-ranging effects nationally and locally, and the court simply demands a higher standard than pure conjecture and arbitrary extrapolation that is unjustified by actual fact, measurement, and proof of harm. In the United States, a man is assumed innocent until proven guilty. The burden of proof is on the accuser to establish beyond a reasonable doubt that the accused has perpetrated some harm that warrants the state taking his life, liberty, or property. But in recent years, a new, lower standard, the precautionary principle, is used when impatient activists deem best available science to be incomplete. Lacking scientific proof, they induce citizens and governments alike to accept any arbitrary doomsday scenario. Then the accused must prove, in the absence of facts, that he has not or will not cause potential harm. Penalties, fees, offsets, and mitigation based on these speculative policies result in the forfeiture of rights and property. In the United States, we are entitled to much better than this. As a minimum requirement, please demand that special interests, NGOs, contractors, consultants, public-private partnerships, county departments, committees, and other branches of government provide you with tangible objectives, specific and detailed plans based on testable science and auditable economics from licensed practitioners before you even consider any new policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Hi. Larry Helm, I’m on Squaw, at Lake Road. I’m in the Mount Baker School District. I am against reconvenance. We have an 8,000-acre parcel of land that’s open to the public for recreation. It’s generating revenue, and it’s not costing us a dime because it’s being run by the Department of Natural Resources. Why would we change that? Why would we say, “We’re going to run it. From what I’ve seen, we’re going to restrict recreation, and we’re not going to cut any trees and develop any revenue.” Doesn’t make any sense. I’d like to tell you that I was a park superintendent in California. The last 10 years, I worked in Sacramento doing planning for large parks such as this, got some experience. To be nice, the budget is bare bones for this park that I’ve seen. You’re going to have patrol time, going to the sheriff to supplement what you’re doing. You’re going to have public works staff up there doing stuff. Your budget has to be looked at. There’s secondary costs in your road access. I mean, I can go on and on. I don’t think you should do that at this time until you get an accurate economic analysis of what you’re going to end up with. Thanks.
Thank you. Wes.
Wes Kench, Ferndale. And I also gave you a letter today. I think you all have it in a packet, from the Ag Advisory Committee. And we discussed the reconvenance a little bit at our last meeting, and it was eight votes to oppose reconvenance. Two people abstained. Nobody voted against it. Our primary concern with that reconvenance is the same as when Futurewise looks at all this farmland being inundated with small, five-acre parcels and stuff. You erode the base for agriculture. Well, to me, you’re eroding the base for forestry when you start making a park out of 8,600. I think I wrote in my letter 9,000 acres, but it’s 8,600 and some acres. Anyway, my concern is that you lose that base, you begin to lose your forest infrastructure, and pretty soon, you no longer make money off that land that is bringing money into our coffers right now. Funds, about 60% of that money, I think, goes to schools, if I’m not mistaken. And like Larry said, there’s no cost to the county. And the reason that the state ended up with that land years ago was because the county got it in lieu of taxes, and they didn’t know what to do with it. They couldn’t afford to do anything with it. They turned it over to the state, and ever since that time, it’s been bringing money in. I’m concerned that we put a park out there. It may be great and popular with a lot of people, but long-term, it’s going to cost tax dollars. And since I have to earn money on my farm to pay taxes, all I see that as another drain that I have to help fund, and I don’t even have time to go use the park. To me, if people use it and think it’s great, that’s fine, but they’ve got to figure out a way to put it in a budget to have money to operate. We can’t adequately operate the parks we now have. As I understand it, there’s been some requests for the last three years to improve the road up to Canyon, is it Canyon Creek Road or whatever? And that’s been put on hold because they don’t have the money to do it. Well, why in the world are we going to tackle another 9,000 acres or 8,600 acres of parkland when we can’t afford to do what we’re doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roth.
Shane Roth, Bellingham, Washington. I’m trying to remember the last time I saw Carl get six to anything on a vote that he, an amendment that he made. I think that Mr. Wymer’s amendment to moratorium was arguably the wisest thing I’ve seen this council do since 2009. And he took this faith-based moratorium and actually gave it some teeth so that it will actually have the effect of protecting the lake and allowing for this clustered development, which might not be the greatest thing in the world, but at the very least, it’s protective now, not based on some Ouija board and magic eight-ball solution that might come down the road in the next couple of months. Maybe. And I’m just very grateful to Mr. Wymer for that, and I’m grateful to those of you who agreed to his amendment and also agreed to pass the moratorium as amended. In terms of the reconvenance, as a person that actually uses these parks, we do not have an excess of parkland. We just don’t. I can’t go more than 100 steps in any park without running into caravan bicycles or being run over by joggers. It’s not like we have an abundance of parkland. We just don’t. And if protecting my drinking water is done at the risk of having some glorious excess of parkland, that’s a chance I am willing to accept. No travel agent ever said, “Don’t go to Watcom County. They have too many parks there.” They just don’t. I mean, if your biggest problem is that you think we have too much parks, you and I need to trade lives so that you can figure out what a real problem is. We’ve got a jail we need to get, we have a lake we need to fix, and your concern is, “Well, let’s not buy it.” We have $50,000 to spend on this growth management hearings board game of chicken that you folks seem to have enough money to do. We’ve got enough money for the reconvenance. And by the way, you’ve already spent the reconvenance money. You might as well just vote for it. I thank the council.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Karen.
I’m sorry. I’m going to make this as fast as I can. Karen Brown, Watcom County. I didn’t make copies for everybody, but I think it’s March 22, 2005, County Council, Special Counsel meeting, and May 3, 2005. I think it would be, some of you were there, some of you weren’t. Barbara, you were. Sam, you were. And Pete, you were there, too. I think you need to reread these. They’re interesting. It’s Mike McFarland talking about the Parks Plan, Comprehensive Plan, and I think it would be beneficial for you to reread them. I have a couple of other things. State of Washington is talking about closing state parks because of lack of funding. What makes us think that Watcom County is going to have the funds to support, let alone the parks we have, add another 8,760 or whatever the figure is, acres that we’re going to have to add onto a budget that is already taxed to the limit? And then I’d like to talk about Mr. McFarland’s Park Commission, Park and Recreation Commission. And he had, at his meeting in November, was supposedly to, it was brought up, but it wasn’t put in the minutes that were published, and there are no recorded minutes available, that only the mountain bike, I mean, the group from Southern Valley and the horseback people were allowed to, that those were the only people that Mike was talking to concerning part of his plan that he was presenting. Unfortunately, I wasn’t there this morning, so I couldn’t hear that. I had some other things I had to do that were much more pressing. And then I would like to put my two cents’ worth in, that I think Mr. McFarland is via Jack Laus is pulling his commission board members, and I think that’s real unfortunate because of, Mr. Laus is going to appoint some people that I don’t, I think he’s, that Mr. McFarland is stacking his deck on the Parks Commission.
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you.
Could you leave those comments with those?
I can. I don’t have enough for everybody.
No, with our clerks?
They’ll make copies for us, Karen. Okay. Roger? Anybody that wants to speak in open session, please line up behind the speaker there, Chet Dow.
Good evening, council members. Roger Omskar, Land Use Consultant, Bellingham. I’m going to talk about something different, the rural element. And I’ve almost read every word of the 93-page order that came down from the state planning commission a few days ago. Before I point out a couple of major problems with it that I, and I do, I came here mainly to support the council suing the board and possibly Futurewise, too, over at least some of the issues, especially the invalidity issues that are hurting, either hurting directly right now or potentially hundreds of people in this county in the rural business areas and a couple of the rural neighborhoods. But before I do that, a couple of observations. I’ve been in private land use practice for 30, about 31 years. I have become convinced in the last couple of years that the overregulation that we have got now, starting at the federal, going through the state, and down to the county and city level, is the main reason our country is not getting out of this recession fast enough. Our real unemployment rate is still probably about 15%, no matter what the D.C. bureaucrats say. And you talk to a lot of private people. They’re afraid to hire anybody and so on. You’ve heard all that. So I think that’s one of my missions, is to point that out, that regulations in general have gotten too complicated. That’s why you haven’t had very many people showing up for the last couple of years about the rural element. It’s so complicated, they can’t understand it. I have trouble understanding it. So the rural element, if you went along with the hearing board and Futurewise, we would just have more complexity, more overregulation, and so on. Second point, we hear a lot about compliance in the newspaper. Why don’t you just comply with the Growth Management Act? Isn’t that the message from Futurewise and others? Well, it’s a lot more difficult than that because the act has 14 goals in it in conflict with each other. Prevent sprawl and allow economic opportunity and protect property rights. Some of the key words are not defined anywhere in state law or regulation, sprawl, small scale, et cetera. You know, I’ve been representing a few people through the process, and they’re all affected by this invalidity right now, all four of them, different situations. And I’ve seen some real problems in this order, some disregard of some fundamental facts about density in the North Bellingham area. I sent you an email today, and I was really surprised to see what I think is a major mistake by the board on this lambered Type III criteria. And thank you. I’ll stop there. Any questions?
Thank you, Roger. All right. Mr. Dow, and then we’ll go over to Mr. Brown.
Chet Dow, 5491 Woodfern Way, Bellingham. Good evening, council. I came to talk about a different park proposal tonight. In August 2011, the Bellingham City Council voted to purchase 82 acres of land, variously known as Chuckanet Ridge or the Hundred Acre Wood. The city didn’t have all the money needed to close the deal, so they borrowed $3.2 million from the Greenways 3 Parks Maintenance Endowment as a short-term loan. There were several options seen for repaying this loan. Among them was for the city to sell a portion of the land sufficient to raise the $3.2 million. Meanwhile, a special interest preservationist group unhappy with the prospect of the city selling any of the property circulated a petition to form a new special taxing district. And this was under RCW Chapter 35, excuse me, Title 35, Chapter 61, which is the state’s Metropolitan Park District law. On February 12, the voters in just 13 of Watcom County’s 178 precincts will decide whether or not to approve the formation of the Chuckanet Community Forest Parks District. And Proposition 1, is what they’ll be voting on, will be the only item on a February 12 special election ballot. And that will be decided by voters in the five neighborhoods of South Hill, Fairhaven, Edgemore, Happy Valley, and South Neighborhood. The election is going to be conducted by our county auditor, Watcom County Auditor. If Proposition 1 passes, the taxpayers within the newly-formed special taxing district will tax themselves to reimburse Watcom County the estimated $50,000 needed to conduct this special election. Now, if voters choose to reject Proposition 1, our Watcom County budget will incur an unwelcome $50,000 hit for the cost of this special election. I’m troubled by how it’s possible for a small group of special interest people to saddle the entire county with the potential cost of a special election. And I hope that you are, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Red Brown.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Guess what? I’m here about the reconvenance. It’s probably not a surprise for anybody.
State your name, please, for the record.
I’m sorry, Councilor Kushner. My name is Rod Brown, and I live in Bellingham. I just wanted to address a couple of the issues that have come up on the reconvenance and perhaps dispel a couple of myths. But before I do that, I just, one of the things that surprised me about this process is that the reconvenance is really about transferring this land under local control and taking it away from people in Olympia who have other agendas and other budgets and so forth. And one of the things that surprised me in this debate is a lot of the people who traditionally are the ones who are looking for local control and less government interference from other areas are not supportive of transferring this into local control, which I find a bit puzzling. I did want to address, one of the myths that’s come up is about DNR. And if DNR controls this land, people do need to be aware that DNR can do a number of different things with it, including trading it with other areas. So trading it, say, with a private landholder for some other land, and the private landholder that could then assume ownership of the land in the watershed. One example of this was the land that originally was the, or currently is, the Plantation Rifle Range was originally DNR land. It was sold to Trillium. Trillium then sold it to a third party, and the county actually leases the rifle range that many of us use. So without DNR control, that can be an issue. I think the opportunity here is for a transfer into the county government to allow for local control. Another one of the myths is that the county government is still able to go to the DNR and have them do anything they want in terms of their existing management, and that includes forest management, harvesting, fire control, everything. If I’ve read the state regulations, there is nothing in there. In fact, the DNR is obligated to provide those services if the county asks for them. Another issue that’s come up here is the issue about the revenue impact. I’ve done a detailed analysis, and I’m happy to share this with you later on in the month. The net revenue impact of this on the long term is about $65,000 a year. There’s a lot of numbers that have been flowing out there. Most of them are misreading the way the DNR funding mechanism works, particularly in relationship to the way school funding is done. I’ll bring up a couple of other issues. One is that the tourist industry now here, I got some numbers recently, is now over half a billion dollars of revenue in this local community is from tourism that supports about just under 6,000 jobs.
Thirty seconds, please.
And generates $7.4 million in tax revenues. It’s a 16, almost 17% increase over the year before. I can tell you, as a businessman, I’d love a business that grew 16% in a year. A 1% increase in tax revenues will cover that $65,000 I talked about. And the last thing I’d say here is, there’s a lot of comments about the impact on the timber industry. Most people do need to be aware that 70% of our timber now goes into scudjet into a highly-automated mill, and the amount of jobs that the county gets every year is diminishing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay. Ms. Baker.
Ellen Baker. And I am representing Glacier Water District. Earlier today, I delivered this request from Glacier Water District that was voted by our board last night. We’ve been participating in, we have attempted to participate in the watershed, the watershed management plan under the Water, the State Watershed Planning Act for years. For years and years, our district has attempted to participate under state law in this process. We are, we’re in a position where we feel we must request a 90-day moratorium on all actions by Watcom County as lead agency of YRO 1, which is a very radical thing to ask for. But we do feel that Watcom County Council needs to conduct a compliance review and return Watcom County to the approved water management plan. In 2005, Watcom County approved a plan for watershed planning under the Watershed Management Act, and that plan was in compliance. YRO 1 is not following the statutory requirements of that plan. The planning unit, which had many caucuses, water districts, agriculture, citizens at large, have not been participating in this plan for two and a half years, and YRO has been acting outside the council-approved plan. And we don’t, we just simply, we feel this simply can’t continue. Pardon me. The Watershed Management, or the Watershed Planning Act says, and I’ll quote, it says, “The process should assure that water resource user interests and directly involved interest groups at the local level have the opportunity in a fair and equitable manner to give input and direction, direction to the process.” The watershed management plan is a bottom-up plan. The planning unit must review and approve the plan from the bottom up. And the planning unit has not had any input into a number of actions that have been taken that are outside the laws. It is a deep concern. It is so, it is so serious that we do believe that council itself should take this opportunity to put a complete freeze on YRO for 90 days. It’s not general comment, but, and I’m hoping the council will review this later in the session. This is, this is a government-to-government request.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
All right. Are you coming to speak in open session? Anybody else wish to speak in open session? Please line up at the signs.
Jason Reimer, Watcom County. I concur with what Ellen just said there as well. I’m opposed to the reconvenance. Just want to be on the record with that. And I think we should think about a new proposition to go on that special ballot this fall. And we call it Proposition 2, and we send all of our waste to that area that’s going to be voting in Proposition 1. We’ll make that our garbage dumps, per se. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See, nobody else lined up for open session? I’m going to close the open session. Thank you all for your comments. We are going to move into our consent agenda. The chair of our finance committee today was Councilmember Crawford.
Madam Chair, we met and considered the consent agenda, items 1, 2, 4, and 5. Item 3 was withdrawn. We voted for recommendation for all four items, and I would so move.
Okay. And just to note, item number 5 is, got additional information. It’s got the pink cover on it for all council members. Councilmember Brenner?
I want to pull item 5.
Okay. So Councilmember Brenner is going to pull item 5. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right. We’ll be voting on items 1, 2, and 4. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 1, 2, and 4, pass. Six to a vote.
Madam Chair, as I said, on item 5, we voted 2 to 0. We were missing a member today, but we did vote 2 to 0 to recommend approval, and I would so move.
Okay. Discussion on item number 5. Councilmember Brenner.
I have a real problem at this point in our economy and in our budget that we even considered putting money aside for a lobbyist in Olympia. And I, I really do appreciate the county executive, and I know he’s new to the job, but I would, you would be the lobbyist I would trust in Olympia. You are the only one. I would, I’m so tired of, and what really disturbed me most of all with the discussion in committee was, “Well, just think how much worse it would be if we don’t do it.” We always get those kinds of comments that you can’t measure. You can never measure. So I think it’s a really bad idea to do it, and I think it’s a complete waste of money.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that item? Councilmember Crawford?
Yeah. Councilmember Kushner, thank you. I went back and forth on this today myself and have some reservations, but got to express most of those earlier today and won’t do that again. But I, I’m going to support this reluctantly. I say reluctantly because I want the executive to be able to pursue this. He did discuss this with the council and got some budget authority, although the details weren’t laid out at that time. Again, my concerns have to do with who we’re partnering, the local municipalities that we’re partnering with, and whether or not we can find enough mutual interest that it supports this kind of expenditure as opposed to us going out on our own for the same amount of money and doing something. I thought after the meeting that we ought to offer Councilmember Cremmon, with all of his Olympia contacts, the $30,000 for expense reimbursement and send him down there, and he could probably be right on target with what this council wants. I think he’s got a pretty good idea. But in any case, I did finally land on the executive’s side on this, that let’s try it for a year. And at the end of the meeting, when I supported that, I also requested that he give us some very clear feedback, either after the session or at the end of the year, as to what we got for our $30,000. got for our $30,000.
Any other discussion on this?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Kremm?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for the executive. I don't know whether you're going to be able to answer it or not. But in the past, Waukesha County has been paying for a lobbyist on transportation issues exclusively through the COG, the Waukesha Council of Governments. Is this in addition to or instead of that effort?
This is in addition to the COG's effort as it relates to transportation.
And do you recall what the, how much Waukesha County's portion is for that lobbying effort on transportation? Is it's?
I'm sorry, I don't know what the contract is. I know Waukesha County pays dues to the COG based on our, the unincorporated population of the county, but how much the actual contract is? I've known that in the past, but it doesn't enter my mind what it is at this point.
The reason I bring this up is because in the past, in the distant past, somewhat distant past, the city of Bellingham and the port of Bellingham helped to fund that transportation lobbying effort. And both those entities withdrew their support for Mr. Parker. And I think that the annual amount that we paid him collectively, the other entities plus Waukesha County, with of course, Waukesha County bearing the lion's share of the total, which I believe was somewhere in the vicinity of $26,000 to $30,000 on an annual basis. And so I, you know, I remembered this, and it's, it's not consistent with the effort that we're now trying to embark on with a collaborative and cooperative joint effort lobbying in Olympia on other issues, which some of them do include, include transportation. So I'm, I was under the impression that this was going to be instead of, and that we were once again going to be true partners. And I'd like to get a little more information from, from the COG to find out if the city of Bellingham and the port of Bellingham, in the spirit of being collaborative and unified in our efforts in Olympia, and are once again helping to pay for the joint transportation lobbying efforts in Olympia.
Okay. I'll be able to find that out for you. I'm not going to be able to do that this evening.
Sure.
I understand. If I may, since I have the floor, just explain that when I took over as executive, I played to what I considered to be my strengths within the office and assumed the responsibilities of Director of Administrative Services. Dewey Dessler, I did hire on a part-time basis at a considerably lower wage than what he was originally paying, saved the county somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $80,000 a year by making those moves. With that said, it has stretched my time considerably in the last year, having direct responsibility with IT, HR, facilities, and finance reporting directly to me, and I spend quite a few hours a week on that. With that said, the amount of time and effort that the executive's office is able to spend on legislative issues is very compressed at this particular time. And the, as I've mentioned, I've never had the experience down in Olympia that former executive Kremmer has had. I don't know the inroads as well as he obviously has because of his experience there and here. And I feel that it's in the best interest of the county to be represented down in Olympia, having feet on the ground, looking after our interests, and by this joint agreement, looking after what Bellingham and the port has going on also. Had a conversation with one of our electeds today, and right now, there's a couple of different legislative moves being considered that are going to substantially reduce or eliminate the liquor tax to the county. Well, that is a, it comes up every year, but that is, is something that we should be involved with. We should have the knowledge of what's going on, and if it gets to the point that it gets serious, we should have the ability to be told at what hearing we should be at to testify because those are big issues. And if we, the choice ... the decisions that are made or what's made, and we need to deal with them. Or ... with it, I need to have some help. And this $30,000 going back into the joint effort allows me the opportunity to continue to do what, what I feel that I need to do within the office, but have those eyes and ears down there. I would really encourage the council to give this a try for a year. That's been my discussion with the city of Bellingham and the port is, is that this is a one-year deal. It's not a three-year contract that we're moving forward. It's one year. As I mentioned, every Friday morning at 8 o'clock, we have a conference call. I would like the council, if you so choose to support this, to appoint one person who would be available to be involved with that throughout this year. So not only I can bring forward a recommendation of whether we've had a successful, that this is a successful effort, but you will have one of your members that will also be able to weigh in on it. If it doesn't work, hey, next year, we aren't going to do it because I don't have any intentions of spending money if it doesn't prove to be fruitful on behalf of Waukesha County. I think that the mayor and I and Rob Fix from the port have a good understanding of how we're going to handle the challenges when we do have competing interests. And I have trust in those folks, that they're going to be good to their word as it relates to it, and that we're going to be able to discuss it and come up with a solution on how we're going to split our interests apart as identified in the contract, but more importantly, as identified as in the discussions that I've had with them. So I would really encourage the council to give this a go because if you don't approve this one, we are going to be relatively unrepresented down in Olympia on a lot of bills and a lot of issues that our legislators down there aren't going to be directly knowledgeable to. There's over 2,000 bills that are going to be filed here in the next few weeks, and any one of them is not going to be able to have all of the information that we may need to stay in touch with that. So appreciate your consideration. We spent an hour on it today. I'll answer any more questions, but I would really appreciate a favorable vote on this.
Okay. And I just want to say that so often, we are faced with implementing something that has been passed by our state legislature, and we fret and fuss about it with really no recourse at the point where the law is the law. And I think that it's a very good idea, having been involved in WASAC and going down and working on the Legislative Steering Committee for the year that I did. It's a very good idea to have our ear to the track, so to speak, on what is coming out of Olympia so that we can advocate for ourselves and also make the most impact on these laws before they get signed by the governor and sent up our way to be implemented. So I'm going to support this. I think it's a, it's a trial balloon we're sending up. I'm happy that we are in a relationship with the port and the city that, where we've got our executive and the mayor and the director of the port agreeing to collaborate on something like this. It hasn't always been the case, so I want to tell you that I appreciate that, and I will be supporting you on this for a year to see how it goes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Knutson?
Yeah. Pretty much what Councilmember Kirshner said, I will say the same because we, I was asked, and I think the rest of us were asked, to do this for a year and see the results. And as we have a new executive, a new director, and a new mayor, I'm going to hope that we can foster some sort of a spirit of cooperation amongst all those entities that hasn't been there in the past. And I'm willing to give this a year, but I will say it will be difficult at times to defend, so hopefully, we don't look back and regret this, but I will be supporting it also.
Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah. And this isn't for debate, it's just an idea. We have never reached out to our local elected officials who actually work on those issues down in Olympia, to their offices. Seems to me, before we start talking about a lobbyist, we should, we should, as a council, contact every legislator in the 40th and 42nd District and tell them, we want to be kept apprised of what's going on, because it isn't going to be much more than that. That's about all we're going to get for our lobbying, lobbying costs. And that's what came up today a number of times, that, oh, you know, we just don't know about these things. Well, I think if we contacted them as personally as a council does and say, we want to know these things that are going to affect Waukesha County ahead of time, they've got staff, they've got people who could help us, and it just seems like that should be the first route we take before you guys even think of just throwing this money at it.
Councilmember Kremm?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, with all due respect, Councilmember Brenner, your statement that we have not contacted our local legislators, nothing could be further from the truth. I mean, the fact is, I, through the last 17 years, have been in contact with our local legislators probably more than most county officials in the entire state of Washington because I know how important it is, having been a member of the legislature. And so we do have and have had a lot of contact with our local legislators. Problem is that there are 98 members of the House, and I think there's 49 senators, and then you have, of course, the lieutenant governor in the Senate, not to mention the governor and the governor's staff and the different department heads. We do need some sort of, we need some eyes, some watchful, experienced eyes in Olympia on a daily basis while the legislature is in session. I do believe that that is to the benefit of Waukesha County. I do have some real reservations about the, you know, the three entities working together on issues, and I know we're going to have weekly conference calls, but for instance, the liquor tax that you alluded to earlier this evening in terms of doing away with the county, I mean, I don't know where that money is supposed to be going to, but it could very, are they just going to eliminate it? Or are they going to shift it from the counties to the cities or to state agencies or whatever? If it happens to be the cities, it's going to be very hard for the city of Bellingham to be on the same page as the county. I am, however, with all my reservations and skepticism about the proposal, I want to commend the executive for at least putting in the time and political capital to forge a unified front to go down to Olympia for the common good of the greater community. And so because of that, I want to support the executive, and I am reluctantly going to support your request.
Councilmember Brenner?
I never said individual council members didn't do whatever they're doing, and thank you for showing us what you've done over the years. I said specifically, the council as a whole. We have never, ahead of things, gone and said, we want to be informed of any and all issues ahead of time, and can you guys help us with that? What we have done a few times is we've, as a council, sent a letter saying, oops, help us on this particular issue. But we've never made the request. They have staff there. I don't think we're going to get any more out of a lobbyist who's got torn alliances than we're going to get out of, you know, elected officials who have staff down there who can help us. I mean, I'm counting noses, and I'm sure it's a lost cause by now, but I was very specific. It was the council as a whole, not what you did individually.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Brenner and Councilmember Kremm. Is there any further discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of item number 5 on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Did everybody vote? Is that, okay. So that was 5 to 1. Councilmember Brenner opposed. That passes. Okay. We'll move into other items. We had Planning and Development Committee, ordinance amending the comprehensive plan. Councilmember Knutson, did you want to introduce that?
Yes. In planning development today, we had two items. The first was an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan designation in the Smith Road, Guided Meridian area, from rural to rural community, and amending the official Waukesha County zoning map from R 5A to R IM.
Madam Chair, could I interrupt?
Oh, yes.
Our auditor, Adelstein, I was hoping that she would be able to respond about that issue brought up during open session.
Okay.
I just, is this a bad time?
Since she doesn't
I just see her leaving. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would be good. Well, what's, what are the wishes of the council? Did you wish to amend the agenda?
Yeah, let's amend it.
And allow a question of our auditor?
I apologize for interrupting. I just saw them leaving, and I just thought it would be good to hear
Yeah.
... from the auditor's standpoint, how a citizen petition could end up costing the taxpayers money.
So there's a motion to amend the agenda to
Yes.
... insert a question for the auditor?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that okay with
All those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We've amended our agenda, and we're going to ask our auditor, if she doesn't mind, to come down. We have a question for you. Councilmember Crawford?
Well, I just wanted to verify that, in fact, if you get something on the ballot, the citizens, it's with a petition? Is that how they did it? And that creates the liability?
Right. Under the information that Mr. Dow presented was the information I supplied him from my office, that under this state statute, you have the means of creating this Metropolitan Park District by a petition that then puts it on the ballot. And then when we run the ballot, it's a question of whether the creation of the district is approved. If they approve the district, then we can bill the district for the expenses of the election.
But how does it become a special election? In other words, it seems to me that citizens can't say, we want the added, you know, because I'm assuming that
Yeah.
... the special election costs more than if
Way more.
... they put it on the ballot when we were having a general election.
It goes on the next election date scheduled that it has, that's a part of the legislation.
And so we have certain dates through the year
Right.
... that are scheduled, and it has to go on.
Right.
We can't wait.
Right.
So we're required to do this by state law
Right.
... and thus incur the potential expense if it fails.
Right. If it fails, see, there's nobody to bill. There's no district created that would be any entity to which you consider to admit a bill to.
Is the figure of $50,000 correct for this?
Well, that's what we're approximating. When one of the school districts ran by itself, I think it was last year, it was close to $50,000
Wow. Okay.
For the same number of electors.
This would be one of those state laws that the county might have wanted to weigh in on prior to it being passed.
If we just had a lobbyist.
Oh, right. Or how about
This is a perfect example. Thank you for staying.
No, I have a question. Councilmember Brenner?
Do you belong to an auditors' association?
Yes.
Have the auditors' associations ever weighed in on something like this? It seems like, because you're the ones who know this stuff, and it seems like it's very
Well, we only know it because it comes up, and, you know,
Right.
... the creation of whoever created the legislation of how to form a Metropolitan Park District.
I understand how, how
Right.
I'm saying
That particular thing, no. What we find for our own legislation is that, you know, we end up picking two What we find for our own legislation is that, you know, we end up picking two or three issues that we advocate for the year. We have a legislative, you know, group that we all meet together and talk about what are our key issues. We can't cover every issue that has a possible impact, any more than you'll find that you'll be able to cover every impact that is one of those, you know, unwritten mandates that we get from the state periodically.
How long has this been in effect?
Oh, I don't know, a long time. It just doesn't come up very often.
Well, yeah, but it just seems like, since we know about it now, I don't think we need a lobbyist. It seems like we need to write a letter to our state legislators. That seems like it would take a little tweak, you know, the next general election, period. Unbelievable that if you're gonna do it as a petition, that way, the next general election, so it doesn't cost a fortune.
In the midst of it, yeah. It's certainly something we can put forward.
I'll bring it up at the next council meeting, if we can send a letter. See?
Councilmember Kremen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is, the city of Bellingham, isn't that special district confined solely to the confines of the boundaries of the city of Bellingham?
Not all of Bellingham is a part of it. A portion of Bellingham.
So, a portion of it is in Waukam County?
No, no. It's all within Bellingham, but it's not all of Bellingham.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. What I was trying to ascertain is, is all of the district in the city of Bellingham?
Yes.
And the city of Bellingham is not on the hook for the, having to defray the cost?
The park district is the one that's putting the potential payer. I mean, we could go back and explore that. It's not something that is--
Yeah.
But, you know, it isn't, the city of Bellingham isn't proposing it. The city of Bellingham probably may not even be in favor of it. I don't know.
But if it's all within the city of Bellingham, wouldn't that municipality shoulder the financial burden to have it put on the ballot?
No.
Because it--
They didn't ask for it. They didn't approve it. The council hasn't--
Well, neither did Waukam County.
Till we run elections.
We run elections. But I got another idea. What about, why don't we charge the, didn't you say the park district is pushing it?
No, the citizens who did this petition. It's just an oddity of the way this petition method is there, because there is a means of creating a Metropolitan Park District that isn't by petition. And then, perhaps, we would have someone to bill for it. It was similar to when they were trying to create, remember, a number of years ago, they were trying to create that park district down in the Chuckanut area that included into Skagit County? That was gonna be a similar situation, only we never got to the point of that actually coming to the ballot, as I understand it. But that would have been a similar situation.
But now we are, and we understand it, and why wait for another example before we send a letter down to Olympia? I can't imagine those guys would even bat an eye about changing that language.
Oh, that, I wouldn't be that naive about it, Barbara, yeah. There are slots of anything, if you only changed a few words here, or a few words there, and what it turns into. But, you know, I think it's a good suggestion.
Between a special election and general election? Something like this, where we're gonna eat it otherwise? That's crazy.
Well, and, you know, there's all kinds of legislation that gets proposed that we may or may not want to have. I just got notification today that there's somebody that's introduced a bill that all of the elections should have prepaid postage. So that, you know, is it, and who's gonna pay for that? Is it gonna be the counties? It's probably not gonna be the state.
But that--
Another item to add to the list.
So, another to go. Add it to the list.
Actually, I don't think it's underneath those titles.
Okay, any other questions for our auditor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna regular, I'm gonna ask you guys to pass it.
Good. Okay, so back to the regularly scheduled programming.
Yep.
All right, Councilmember Knutson?
My apologies for the interruption.
Okay. In planning and development, we had two things. The first thing was the slaughterhouses, which was held in committee. And the second thing was an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan designation in the Smith Road-Guidemaridian area from rural to rural community, and amending the official Waukam County zoning map from R-5A to RIM. This came with a recommendation to forward for concurrent review, two to zero, with Councilmember Mann absent. And I recommend approval.
Okay, Councilmember Knutson has recommended approval. I've got a question, and I don't know, if we, this doesn't take effect tonight, no.
No, this just goes forward for concurrent.
When are we doing concurrent review? When are we gonna do that? February 12th. So, if we're, if RIM is invalid, does this become invalid?
Yeah, I think we need to address that. We'll talk about that before you get to the point of concurrent review.
Doing the concurrent review? So, if we pass it tonight, we still got time to change our minds? Okay. If we need to. Why would we move a valid piece of property into an invalid state? I don't know.
The status changed, so it wouldn't be invalid.
Okay. So, is there any further discussion on this ordinance? All right, will the clerk please call the rule?
Can I get clarification on the motion, please?
Oh, there is no motion. Was there one?
I made a motion, I'd forward, we forwarded this to concurrent review.
That was never said, so I just wanna clarify.
It was said. We heard it.
So, I want to approve it, or something like that.
He read the whole thing, and then he said it, so there it says.
Okay, will the clerk please call the rule? Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Pete Kremen?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes six to zero. And so, we'll move on to other items, number two. And we've got several appointments to fill this evening. So, we are going to be starting with, let's see here, Board of Equalization. Is that what everybody has in their packet as the first one? Yep. Okay. We've got Board of Equalization, District Number Three. We have one vacancy and one applicant. And so, I will accept a motion to appoint Mary Jane Anderson by acclamation.
I move approval for Mary Jane Anderson.
Okay. Could we have somebody from, oh, sorry.
At large.
Yep, thank you. So, Councilmember Knutson has moved Mary Jane Anderson by acclamation. Do we vote on that, if it's by acclamation? Yes, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mary Jane, for agreeing to serve. Okay, now we're looking at the Board of Equalization alternate, and we've got two vacancies. We have three applicants. Wes--
We do?
We do. Wes Van de Mark? Emily Weaver, and Naomi Bunis. Okay, and we did have some additional applications on the yellow packet here.
Naomi has two there, so we got this--
This packet here. So, Naomi applied as well. Okay. Okay, and you want to share mine here, Councilmember Brenner? Okay, so what we'll do is, each, council member will vote for two. And we'll have, start with Councilmember Wymer. Are you ready to start? Okay, Councilmember Wymer?
Emily Weaver and Naomi Bunis.
All right. Councilmember Knutson?
Weaver and Van de Mark.
All right, and council, I'm going in my order here, so Councilmember Crawford?
I'm still ready.
Are you still looking? Okay. I'll vote. It's going to be Van de Mark and Weaver for Kerschner. Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah, and I want to preface it by saying, I always support incumbents when they want to run again, if they've done a good job. And we've heard these guys have been doing a great job. So, Van de Mark and Weaver.
All right. Councilmember Kremen?
Madam Chair, may I ask our, the council a question before I--
Yes.
Was there a, was this submitted in a timely manner? Or was there no deadline?
We do set a deadline, but the council decided quite some time ago that they would accept up until 5:00 PM of the day, at four or five of the day, that the, of the meeting in which the applicants are gonna be chosen.
And that was done prior to this, okay. Okay, then, I'm going to support Weaver and Bunis.
Okay, and Councilmember Crawford?
Weaver and Van de Mark.
All right. So, it looks like the two selected Board of Equalization alternates will be Van de Mark with four votes, and Emily Weaver with six votes. And Naomi Bunis received two votes. Thank you for being willing to serve. All right, let's see. The next one we have is the Drayton Harbor Shellfish Protection District Advisory Committee.
I'll nominate Steve Seymour.
Okay, Steve Seymour is the only applicant. We have one vacancy. So, all those in favor of nominating Steve Seymour, I mean, appointing Steve Seymour, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Steve. All right. Law and Justice Council, we have one vacancy, and we have three applicants. We have Brian Hobie, Adrian Madrone, and Mitchell Jansik. Give folks a chance to figure out who they're going to vote for. And-- Are there any nominees? I mean, is there any nomination?
I'll nominate all three, just so we can expedite this.
Okay. And are council members ready to vote? All right, Councilmember Wymer?
Mitchell Jansik.
All right, Councilmember Knutson?
Brian Hobie.
All right, Councilmember Crawford?
Hobie.
Councilmember Brenner?
Hobie.
Councilmember Kremen?
Hobie.
And I'll vote for Hobie as well. I believe he's the incumbent. So, Brian Hobie will be the Law and Justice Council nominee, receiving five votes, and Mitchell Jansik receives one vote. Thank you for agreeing to serve. Okay, I guess, just so the audience knows, we do have positions where we don't receive applicants. We have the Noxious Weed Control Board. We have three vacancies. We didn't receive any applications, so if you're interested in serving there. We have the Horticulture Pest and Disease Board. We have two vacancies and no applicants. And a Community Network, three vacancies and no applicants. So, there's some places to plug in if you are interested in serving. Right, we also have the Open Space Advisory Committee. We have a vacancy with no applications. And it's not too late. We don't just make these appointments at the beginning of the year. As long as there's a vacancy, we can appoint. So, if you are interested, you can submit an application. All right, so we are now at our Planning Commission, District Two.
I'll nominate all three.
Okay, we have two vacancies, and we have three applicants. Ben Ellenboss, Mary Beth Tigrove, and Shane Roth. All right, are folks ready to vote? I'll start with Councilmember Wymer.
Ben Ellenboss and Shane Roth.
Okay, Councilmember Knutson?
Ben Ellenboss, Mary Beth Tigrove.
Councilmember Crawford?
Ellenboss and Tigrove.
Brenner?
Ellenboss and Tigrove.
Kremen?
Ellenboss and Roth.
And I will vote for Ellenboss and Tigrove. So, Ben Ellenboss and Mary Beth Tigrove will be our Planning Commission District Two commissioners. Ben received six votes, and Mary Beth received four votes. Yeah. Thank you for agreeing to serve, and for applying. Okay, we have the Planning Commission, District Three. We've got one vacancy and two applicants.
I'll nominate both applicants.
Okay, both applicants. We have Jay Michael Zachary and Gerald Andrew Vekfed. All right. Are council members ready to vote? Councilmember Wymer?
Jay Michael Zachary.
Okay, Councilmember Knutson?
Yeah, can I preface this with a, I would just like to say that I, that both these applicants I contacted were very qualified, and I appreciate their willingness, and I would hope that this vote would not prohibit them from applying for any other positions, because I really think they would be a valuable asset, either one of these two. So, but I'm gonna vote for Vekfed, and it was basically on the grounds that he has been here for a long time in the community. But I would like to say that, Mr. Zachary, I appreciate your willingness also.
Okay, Councilmember Crawford?
Zachary.
Councilmember Brenner?
Vekfed.
Councilmember Kremen?
Zachary.
Okay, and I'm gonna vote for Michael Zachary. I appreciate both applicants applying. Council, applicant Michael Zachary receives four votes, so he will be our Planning Commission, District Number Three commissioner. And Gerald Vekfed received two votes. All right, we move to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We have two vacancies and two applicants. The applicants are Ed Nicola and Pete Edwards.
They're both for different positions. I'll move them both for acclamation.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Ed Nicola and Pete Edwards, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that, those two are appointed six to zero. And we've got a Surface Mining Advisory Committee. We've got eight vacancies and two applicants, Leslie Dempsey and Scott Hulse. Is there a nomination?
Both of them by acclamation.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, Leslie Dempsey and Scott Hulse will be on our Surface Mining Advisory Committee.
All right, which page is this slide?
Okay, so that takes care of the nominations for the council, acting as the council. And now, we've got nominations for our Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee's special district. We will be acting as the Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. We have two vacancies and four applicants. Our vacancies for special districts are, I mean, our applicants are Ron Bronzma, Harry Williams, John Lamont, and Teresa Sigatowicz.
Yeah, if we can--
Is there more information?
Oh, there's another?
Yeah, we have-- Can we get another packet? There were some new flood members.
Okay, so, yeah. We're looking at the special, for special districts, we have Ron Bronzma, Harry Williams, John Lamont, and Teresa Sigatowicz. We have a lot of people interested here. So, we're gonna be voting for two vacant positions. Okay, so it's Teresa and John that came in, in the orange packet.
Are they also incumbents?
One of them is.
So, Bronzma and Williams are incumbents?
Right.
And what's the status of, Perry's an incumbent?
Well, we're not voting on that one yet. Only special districts.
So, I'm sorry, so we're looking at John and Teresa. Are they incumbents?
No.
Neither one?
No, Teresa served on it, though, in 2011, on her application.
Okay, that is wonderful.
Are people ready to vote? Okay. Councilmember Wymer?
Ron Bronzma and Harry Williams.
Okay. Councilmember Knutson?
John Lamont and Harry Williams.
Councilmember Crawford?
Bronzma and Williams.
Councilmember Brenner?
Williams and Lamont.
Councilmember Kremen? Councilmember Cremmon?
Sigatowicz and Bronzma.
You guys are mixing it up here. Okay, and I'm going to vote for Bronzma and Williams. All right, so Ron Bronzma got four votes, so he'll be one of our selections, and Williams received five votes, so he'll be our second applicant. And thank you, everybody, for being willing to serve. There's always a lot of interest on this one. That's wonderful. Okay, the Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee impacted cities. We have two vacancies and we have two applicants, Robert Bromley and John Perry.
I nominate both.
Okay, all those in favor of Robert Bromley and John Perry, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you for serving. Last one here is the Birch Bay Watershed and Aquatic Resource Management Advisory Committee. We have one vacancy and two applicants, Scott Hulse and William Booth. Everybody ready?
Are either of them the incumbent?
No.
No.
Oh, this is the new. This is BBWARM.
Yeah, it's not a new one.
Is this BBWARM?
Yes.
It is BBWARM.
And is this have anything to do with that issue about where people live?
No, we didn't change that. Both of these live within that district. We still need to address that, though.
Right, neither one of them has served before on this committee. Okay. Councilmember Wymer?
Bill Booth.
Oh, yes, I need a nomination.
I'll nominate both of them.
Okay.
Bill Booth.
All right. Councilmember Knutson?
Scott Hulse.
Councilmember Crawford?
Hulse.
Councilmember Brenner?
Booth.
Councilmember Cremmon?
Hulse.
And I'll vote for Scott Hulse. So Scott Hulse receives four votes. William Booth receives two. Thank you for being willing to serve. So we're moving on to our other item, number four, which is a request confirmation of the county executive's concurrent appointment of Susan Gribbin to the Bellingham Watcom County Housing Authority's Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval, I mean confirmation.
Do we do them all at once?
We're just doing Susan Gribbin because she has a concurrent appointment. And I'll just say that I had the pleasure of serving with Susan when I was on the Community Development Advisory Board, and she's a hard worker, so I'm glad she's willing to step up and be part of this housing board, Housing Authority Board. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of confirming the county executive's appointment of Susan Gribbin to the Bellingham Watcom County Housing Authority's Board of Super Commissioners, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes six to zero. And item number five, request confirmation of the county executive's appointments to boards and commissions for the year 2013. I do believe there is a list, so.
272.
272.
All right, is there a motion to confirm?
I'll move the entire list as provided by the executive.
All right, any -- yes, that's what we're going to do. We've got a one-item vote here. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of confirming the executive's appointments to boards and commissions for the year 2013, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, they're all confirmed by the council. Thanks for agreeing to serve. Now, what is that? Oh, do you want me to read them all? I can do that. Yeah, okay, so the Agricultural Advisory Committee, John Baer, Dave Byes, Vicky Holly, Larry Helm, Wes Kench, Debbie Vanderveen, and Landon Van Dyke. Bellingham Watcom County Commission Against Domestic Violence, Mary Dumas. Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Stonewall Bird, Delane Clusby, Dr. Joseph Garcia. Civil Service Commission, Paul Myers and Konstantin Papadakis. County Appeals Board, Roger Axelson, Greg Hinton, Richard May. Development Standards Technical Advisory Committee, Michael Despino, Michael Mathis, and Dan Traxler, Elizabeth Binney, and Larry Steele. Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, Todd Childs, Carla Shelton. Ethics Commission, David Franklin, Harriet Spinell, and Adrian Madrone. Marine Resource Committee, Ken Karosko and Doug Stark. Parks and Recreation Commission, Jeffrey Margulis and Janet Boyhan. Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee, Louise Mugar. Public Health Advisory Board, Ben Schultz and Dr. Michael Thompson. Purchase of Development Rights Oversight Committee, Paul Schichler and James Lonan. Veterans Advisory Board, Stephen Lockwood, Shelley Klein, and Ward Nelson. And Watcom County Library System Board of Trustees, Tom Burton. So, thanks for asking. We should have given Ward a bit of a hassle, but we didn't.
He wasn't here, was he?
Of course not.
Okay, so we're moving to introduction items. Is there a motion to accept the three introduction items? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the introduction items, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, those are all accepted for introduction. Other business. We do have a few things we have to resolve here. Councilmember Brenner, did you have something?
Yeah, and I think it would be under other business, that information that Ellen Baker brought up. I just feel like this.
Talk into your microphone.
Oh, sorry. I'm concerned that the IRA process is not remaining the open, transparent, and diverse process that it was. I mean, I brought this up last time. I'm really having a problem moving on with anything until we get that planning unit back established, and I don't want to do anything, I don't want to spend money, until we have that planning unit to give us recommendations.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, Executive Louse?
The Joint Policy Board is meeting Thursday afternoon. I think it's at 1:30. I just looked at my schedule and then forgot whether it's 1:30 or 2:30. I do plan at the end of that meeting to bring up a discussion related to the planning unit. Then next Tuesday, we have a water workshop session that you guys are invited to, and our staff is planning on discussing with you the WIT, which is the integration team group, the water supply plan that the PUD is -- we're proposing that the PUD take care of, and also the Consolidated Water System Plan, which is going to be proposed at the Health Department, take that on. So in the next week, specifically next Tuesday, you guys are going to have the opportunity to be brought up to date on where we're at with everything, and I'll be able to report, hopefully, the discussion as it relates to the planning unit that we're going to -- that I'm going to be bringing up at the Joint Board. So I understand that the Glacier Water District, Birch Bay Water and Sewer District, and others in the community are wondering what the status of the planning unit is, and I'm planning to bring it up for discussion and see whether we can come to a resolution regarding it.
Okay, Councilmember Brenner?
Well, the law, I mean, we set that up. It was the way it was set up. I'm concerned about moving ahead with the PUD or anybody else till we have our recommendations from the planning unit. And I'm glad you're bringing it up. I just don't want us to be voting on other things in the meantime until we get the planning unit up and running and they give us recommendations.
If I may hold some of my counsel on this tonight, because I don't want to get myself in front of what the presentation is going to be, but there are differences of opinion to what the planning unit is responsible for and what their -- and whether or not that, as it regards to the legality of the whole thing. I'm not commenting on it one way or another, other than I'm going to be talking with the Joint Board, our staff, who we have our pain on an ongoing basis to stay involved with this, is going to report to you. You guys will make your -- be able to make your decision based on that and move forward with it as early as next week, Tuesday. So to debate it tonight without being able to present the information and to be able to have the full package put together, I think is counterproductive, but I did want to stand up and let you know that that is in the works.
Are they going to be taking any action during the Thursday meeting that -- Thursday?
Oh.
I can't say what action that the Policy Board would take. That's up to the Policy Board, so I'm not going to presume what they're going to -- what they're going to do. But we're going to be talking about the different programs that are ongoing in Watcom County as we speak, and staff has some recommendations for the Policy Board and how they -- the Policy Board reacts to that as a group. I'll report to you on Tuesday what happened.
Okay, I would like to ask, because this has been one of those murky topics that kind of rears its head every so often, but there's really never an action that the council takes, so there's never anything, you know, for us to make a decision on. When you talk about WIT and IRA and Strategy Board and Planning Unit and a couple of the other groups, this council member hears you speaking Greek. I don't know who is who and what kind of planning they're doing. There's concern from our citizens. I mean, we keep hearing bits and pieces about this planning unit, and I just really want to understand the issue better so that I can make good decisions at this council level, wherever those decisions might plug in. So on Tuesday, we're going to get some info?
On Tuesday.
Excellent.
Please be there. Looking forward to it.
Okay, and Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah, just one more comment, though. I was around for the planning unit, and of all the committees or anything we've ever had, that was the most diverse, and they got more things done. And the council, I don't even remember us voting down their recommendations. They were so comprehensive in what they did, and they spent so much time. We were extremely lucky to have them. And even if there's a way to weasel out of having a planning unit, why should we? I mean, that was the best format that we ever had, and I just don't want to see -- I don't want to see it changed.
No.
I'm sorry, Ellen.
You're not the chair.
Yeah, we don't. Is there a desire of the council to hear from a community member? All those in favor?
She's representing.
She sent us a letter today. We understand their position.
I read the letter.
The administration has responded. They're going to give us a presentation. The public is invited to attend next week.
Well, how about Thursday? Is the public invited to that? Are they going to be -- is it going to be a public meeting with public input?
I don't believe that there's going to be any action that we're going to take tonight other than to get and gather information. There was a letter given to us. I haven't even had time to read it yet because it was given to me this morning, so I am satisfied at this point with the information. It sounds like I personally have a lot more research to do, so I understand what people are talking about when you say the planning unit was the greatest committee ever. I don't know what they did.
They made all those recommendations, and now it's shell fart.
All right. Let me review it. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Executive Louse. Thank you, Councilmember Crawford.
Aren't you going to thank me?
Thank you, Councilmember Brenner.
Oh, you're welcome.